Welcome to the February 23rd, 2023, Department of City Schools District Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge is that this is the flag of the United States of America and it's your republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this soul, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Newsy.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mrs. Swark.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
It is.
All right, can you please monitor the livestreams throughout the meeting? And if there's a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed.
Will do.
Thank you. So, welcome, everybody. This is awesome. We love it. We love it. I know you've been gone before the business part of the meeting, because that's the most exciting part of this meeting. Uh, thank you for coming. So with that, Dr. Smiley.
Yeah, first I want to apologize for the less than optimal conditions this evening. I, we weren't, this is the first time we're doing a culture of achievement presentation, and we weren't sure exactly how many parents will come and family members. So this is great. We're very glad you're here. We are also learning from this experience, and we will have all of the rest of these in the Palmer Senior High little theater, so they should be a little bit more comfortable. So thank you for being our pilot experience. Uh, for the board, um, and for, you know, the folks watching on Facebook, um, you know, we, we did all of our school presentations, and those are, I think, really, uh, healthy for people to see some of the action steps that we're taking to improve achievement. Uh, we talked a lot about climate and all of those. And we often recognize students for outstanding behavior or citizenship and improvement. And all of those things are really critical elements of what we try to build, which is great citizens. But at the same time, we want to make sure we're also recognizing the students who are achieving at the highest levels. Our top goal as a district always has been to increase student achievement. And we have asked our principals, and this is a challenge for them, because they've been asked to choose 10 students from their entire student body that really are top achievers in their schools. So we have asked them to, to use whatever criteria they want, but it has to be specific to outstanding achievement. And we're here tonight because we want to celebrate the fact that you are truly examples of our culture of achievement in the Palmer City Schools. So we're going to start off with Greenbrier tonight, and we'll turn over to Ms. Schistler, who is our principal, explaining how she chose only 10 students out of approximately 4,000 middle school students that attend Greenbrier.
Stole my thunder. Well, how did we choose? Uh, I chose what, or I did what I do best, and that's delegate. And, um, I actually had my teacher leaders, uh, my instructional team, our instructional team, team leaders, chairs, and BLT to take back to their teams and to give us our absolute highest achievers based on math scores and OSTs from the previous year. And the students also had to be hearing, uh, they had to have all A's. And, um, I felt that they gave me some outstanding kills, and we're going to honor them tonight, as well as a parent, um, which happens to be a sister and misses, um, from the same family will honor them as well. So, thank you all for being here, and, um, Angela, welcome to the Board of Education. And I went up and introduced myself and said, "We would love to have you come visit us at Greenbrier. We'd love to show off."
Love to be there.
And in fact, Tiffany was surprised we didn't have, like, the band here tonight. She's got to do things at the prior. So, um, well deserved, and do you want them to come up charming individually?
You can, uh, call their names, and then when she's done calling names, we can all come up at the same time. And so we'll, then we'll take a picture right in the center.
Okay, here we go. All right, we're going to start off with our seventh grade. We are 5'7" building. We're going to start off in seventh grade, and first we have Mr. Nolan French. Uh, Nolan's math scores thus far for ELA are 242, math 257. And last year's OST scores in ELA was 762, and math 761.
If you want, um, reference points to, my math score was seven. His is outstanding.
Speaking of that, um, you're really stealing my thunder here. I usually don't like, um, talking in front of these students because I know they're a lot smarter than me, which, um, like, I couldn't spell National Honor Society, but that's another story. That being said, back to Nolan. Nolan has all A's. Nolan is a class leader in his honors math class, constantly volunteering to answer and explain math concepts to his peers, and always having, always has insightful and thoughtful essays in ELA. Nolan has played wreck basketball, plays the saxophone, and loves to ride his mountain bike.
Doop-dee-dah.
Absolutely. Nolan may want to be a chef someday, and also believes he is much better looking than his twin. Fair, Nolan.
So, yeah, she's doing such nice introductions, so why don't you come up, Nolan?
Okay. Our next seventh grade recipient, this might sound familiar, is Mr. Reese French. Reese, uh, math scores thus far, um, 239 in ELA, 255 in math. Last year's OST ELA score is 786, right? OST math 777. Reese has all A's. Reese played on the seventh grade boys' basketball team this year and is planning on running track this spring. Reese is a top, is top in his honors math class, often finding solutions to challenging math problems, and is an excellent writer in ELA. Reese enjoys playing video games in his free time, enjoys being, being outside, meeting his friends at the park. Reese also says he is taller and better looking than Nolan. And they are twins. First time I've met him, that is exactly what Nolan said to me, too. He said, "I'm better looking." Our next recipient, seventh grader Lorenzo Quimson. Lorenzo has a 241 in math's ELA, uh, 259 in math, maps. Last year's OST in ELA, 749, and OST in math, 771. Lorenzo has all A's. He's interested in joining track, and Lorenzo enjoys going outside and playing with his cousins. Lorenzo wants to work with computers after he finishes his education. Lorenzo. Good job, Lorenzo. And our last seventh grader, Austin Tacho. Austin is, has a 242 in ELA maps, a 255 in math maps. Last year's OST ELA score, 774, and OST in math, 777. Austin has all A's, is a member of our cross-country team, and will be joining track this spring. Austin enjoys reading, and his favorite book is The Red Planet. Austin plans to become a scientist. Where are y'all, Austin? Our seventh grade highest achievers out of around 900 students at Greenbrier.
Are we going to do them separately? Would you, would you all, we don't need this.
All right.
Yeah, I think I got my photo up. He will soon, he will.
Moving on to sixth grade, Ms. Amelia George. Nice to have my young lady. Um, Amelia is, uh, her math scores in ELA was 252, math 244. Her OST last year as a fifth grader in ELA, 764, and OST in math, a 787. But here's the kicker for Ms. Amelia. In OST science, our fifth grade takes a science test. She had a perfect score of 845. Oddly enough, Amelia has all A's. She's hardworking, love that word, diligent and kind. Amelia is constantly looking for ways to improve and help others. Amelia likes to draw and paint and loves to play soccer. Amelia George. And Amelia, your Coach Fink was not able to be here tonight. She's actually coaching basketball, and this is for you from Miss Fink. If you know Miss Fink, you love Miss Fink. Okay. Next sixth grader, George Hannah. George, math score, yeah. George had something unexpected. His math score in ELA is a 238, in math a 256. Last year as a fifth grader, his, um, ELA score for OSTs was 774. Ready for this? As a fifth grader in math, George had a perfect score of 804 on his OST. 798 in science. He has all A's. He's hardworking. There's that, those two words again. Diligent and kind to his classmates. George helps others, and is constantly looking for ways to improve. George has a love for math and art. He likes to play basketball and loves plants. George is planning on being a veterinarian. Congratulations. And our, make sure I got this right. Yes, my last six, our last sixth grader, Ms. Violet has more. Violet had a math score in ELA of 241, math 228, uh, OST ELA, 751, and OST math, 705. Violet has all A's. She's a wonderful young lady. She comes to class every day with a smile on her face and is always prepared for the day. She was one of the top three students to score a 241 in her math maps test for the Linsky benchmark. Violet is determined to learn and be her best at all times, which makes her an asset to her house. Violet plays travel soccer. She enjoys going to park, hurt the park with her friends. And in the summer, Violet likes to spend her time at soccer camp or the beach. She is planning on becoming a veteran. Congratulations. And I forgot to give George his gift from Mrs. Fink. There you go, George. Last but not least, our fifth grade. Our first fifth grader is Seth Hussein. Seth's ELA, uh, math score is 228, his math score 277. His OST ELA in the fourth grade was an 803, and his math score was an 835. Seth has all, or has all A's and participated in the GCTM Math Problem Solving Tournament for Mathnasium. Seth enjoys playing on the computer and playing games with friends, and he has a dog named Cooper. Okay. Next fifth grader, we have Ms. Bailey McRae. Bailey had a 234 in ELA maps, a 229 in her math maps. OST fourth grade at 846, OST in math as a fourth grader, 809. Bailey has all A's. She's in the gifted program and one of our student council reps. Bailey also participates as a cheerleader outside of school. Bailey plays the flute. She enjoys hanging out with friends at the park, and she plans on being an interior designer, musician, and photographer. Way to go, Bailey. And last but not least, for our fifth grade, um, Junior Miltuch.
Junior.
Junior has a 217 in math ELA, a 227 in math maps, a 775 in ELA OST, and an 820, uh, for his math score in the fourth grade. Junior has all A's and one of the fifth grade student council reps. Junior likes to play football, basketball, and video games, and he collects shoes. I'm getting Junior plans on being a baker or a football player. Good job, Junior.
We also, before we do the pictures, I know we're ready for that, but we also asked our principals to choose one, and I know, um, Schistler chose two because they're a couple, but we wanted to recognize parents who really go above and beyond to support us, to remember roles in the schools. And we left that pretty open ended, but we wanted, you know, really an elite parent that really has stepped up to, to, to make a difference for our kids. So, Ms. Schistler?
Okay, so our recipients at Greenbrier are Mr. and Mrs. Atkins. And they have two students at Greenbrier, Jason, who's in the seventh grade, and Giuliani, who's in the fifth grade. They're very supportive of our students in the classroom. They are very generous. They always are willing to donate whatever is needed for the classrooms. Um, their daughter bought 40 friendship bracelets for our special needs students. Um, and they contributed a lot to the penny wars, and that's a big deal. Um, dad even came in during the father's walk to sweeten the child's piggy bank to win those, um, penny wars. I want to thank the Atkins for everything you do. We love you at Greenbrier, and we are so thankful to have you for us. Thank you.
Okay, now I think we're ready for pictures. Mr. Vaughn?
I'm, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to cut the idea.
Who's biggest human?
I'm the biggest person. You want to go back with the fog? Everybody, ready this way. You two, ready? One, two, three. One more? One, two, three.
One more round of applause for our Greenbrier recognition. And families, this is more than appropriate at this time. If you would like to depart, you're welcome to stay, but we really are grateful for your time, and it is a socially appropriate activity. And so we're all done, right? Even if they leave.
Yes.
For their granddaughter.
Those two twins are little contestants?
I was definitely glad to look at the other one.
Thanks for coming.
All right, so that, um, sort of instantly became like the favorite thing we've ever done at a board meeting? And those, those intros were, were great. Um, the, the, you know, the scores are certainly impressive. You know, kind of going beyond that was great. And then those OST scores, some of those kids had. I mean, that's, that's incredible. So I'm really, thank you, board, for indulging us in that. And that was a great, and Ms. Schistler really, honestly, she nailed it. We, we didn't give a lot of parameters to this, but she, she really did a great job introducing, so. She set the bar high for, for us. Uh, so now that I've clearly said that's our favorite thing that we've ever done for me, now I'll turn over to Ms. Desert Hagg.
One, one of our favorites.
Who will, uh, she was nice enough to reschedule, um, because at one point we had three schools scheduled for school presentations, and sometimes those can get somewhat lengthy. And she was polite enough to say, "You know what? I'll, I'll bring up the rear. I'll go last." It certainly does not diminish what we think of her nor the accomplishments of Densler Elementary, and we are ready to turn it over to Ms. Desert.
Thank you. Save the best for last, huh?
Exactly right.
Thank you, Board of Education. Thank you for having us in tonight, senior leadership team, and Dr. Smiley. Um, I am here to tell you a little bit about Densler and highlight some of our, um, you know, great things that we're doing there and some of our staff as well. So, in following with the other, um, board presentations, you know, we follow a certain pattern. Um, we're starting with our academic strengths. So our academic strengths at Densler is definitely our school report card. Um, you can see there that we have five stars in our gap closing, which is a component that measures the reduction in educational gaps for student subgroups. Um, we have five stars in our progress component and four on our, um, achievement component. And so how do we do that? Well, we work as a team. It's a team of Project Densler. Um, we look at our school improvement plan. Um, we use our board adopted curriculum. Constantly commenting on, um, walkthroughs just today, some of the people in the room. Um, use a board adopted curriculum, our instructional playbook that we use at every staff meeting and every professional development site. Um, and all that we do for the last over five years. So we're very focused in that, um, approach as well. And just, you know, the commitment to the students, the building leadership team is awesome. Um, they work hard. They go back to the TBTs, and they work hard. Everybody is laser focused on student achievement and what we're doing at Densler. Um, the next slide kind of just goes into a little bit of detail in what is four stars. You can see an achievement. We exceeded the state standard in academic achievement. That exceeded progress, um, significant evidence that the school exceeded student growth expectations by a larger magnitude. And the gap closing again significantly exceeds state standards imposing educational gaps with our subgroups. I just put another slide in. The next slide shows the educational subgroups. So it kind of just is a visual for you to see that the red dot, um, is the expected goal and growth for each category, and you can kind of see where Densler was in all of the subgroups that we have in ELA and math. Um, one of our achievement concerns on the next slide is our early literacy. I know that you've heard probably maybe from all of the elementaries that we're really focused on early literacy. Although you can see that three stars meets the state standards, um, of course, we're always working to get better in that. Um, and so what do we do to work on that early literacy is working with students in PI. I know that you know that PI is prevention intervention and enrichment. Um, working in core instruction, um, of the foundational skills and what we need to do with our early literacy. And we are well on our way this year already. If you look at the next slide, um, this is a strength, although a concern. Our early literacy is a concern, but you can see what our kindergarten growth has looked like this year so far. Um, and that we're well on our way from fall to winter. The average gain was 63 points versus the national average gain of 37 points. So 82% of our students exceeded the national growth rate. And that's directly related to our early literacy. So although three stars is still, I guess you would say, okay by the state, um, we are always striving to do better, and, um, we can see so far from fall to winter, we are well on our way. Um, the next slide just goes into, you know, specifically again what we are doing. Um, I refer to the early literacy skills, just really working with our ELA teachers in the core instruction and with our Title I teachers and our building literacy specialists and all of the teachers there to implement, you know, systematic instruction, day in and day out. The majority of our teachers are trained in letters. I know you've heard about that. Um, and, um, you know, they work on authentic literacy, read, write, and discuss every day. And that's what we do every day, all day long. So looking at our resilient learner strength, I have to give a shout out to Mrs. James. Here we go. Mrs. James is here. Um, she's our dean of students. You can stand up real quick. And she, um, runs our resilient learner team. I know you've met deans of other schools. They work with our resilient learner side of our playbook and focusing on social emotional learning with the students and what our students need specifically in the way of social emotional learning. A strength of ours, we were very proud of, and she's single-handedly with her team. We did receive the silver award last year from the State of Ohio designation for our PBIS. Um, the staff has been trained. We have 22 of our students receiving Tier Two services, and many of our students volunteer their time for check-in, check-out. So we have, you know, some of the other programs that the other schools have, but it is tailored to the Densler way. Um, something that I like that they do is if they do a check-in, check-out mentor, they may talk to the student about, you know, who's an adult in the building that you maybe would like to see a couple times a day or talk with, and they have a menu of pictures. So it's, it's really kind of neat because some of the younger students might not necessarily remember that they worked with this intervention specialist in kindergarten or first grade, but when they see it, well, I would like to meet with that person. And then they circle back and, and make that relationship form for that student. Um, something else that's a strength is our restorative circles. So they were implemented last year as well. Um, teachers now build them into the classroom community. Sometimes they call them morning meetings, but if they don't happen in the morning, then they're classroom meetings. And again, it's just getting the students in a circle. It can be academic. They can be something that, hey, I noticed that the new monitor said the last week or so that this has been going on on the playground. Let's talk about it. Or let's talk about, you know, everything that you know about this topic in science. So circles can be geared toward social, emotional, or academic. Um, but it's great to be involved in a circle because they could last all day. I mean, the students just want to, want to talk and want to share. Resilient learner concern that we have is just empowering our classified staff more, always looking at ways and times that we can meet with them and get them involved in that Tier One and Tier Two, um, part of our program. Um, surveying the classified, making the Tier Two referral form a little more parent and classified friendly. Um, so they're working on that as well. And then another resilient learner concern is our chronic absenteeism, something that we're always working to improve. Um, you can see we had 27% of students who are chronically absent, and that was in last year's report card. So we are improving with that. Um, we follow all of the HB410 timelines and letters and meetings. Mrs. James, myself, and our home liaison meet every Monday. Um, and we talk attendance. I think that's our first agenda item. And we talk attendance, and we look at our top five or top 10 and what we're doing and what's in place. And sometimes we even call parents right on the spot there to say, hey, you know, what can we do? We've noticed this, or we've noticed an improvement, or remember, we have the plan, but we're not getting doctor's notes from you. So just following up, it's a constant follow-up on attendance for sure. Um, some of our highlights. Well, I know you don't want me to go on for hours, but I could. Um, I always love talking about Densler, so if you ever want to talk about Densler, just, you know, stop over or call me. Um, we have a great positive culture. The, the Densler family, it's, it is really like a family, and I know you've heard that from, um, other buildings as well. We are already talking about ways that we will welcome our new staff and our new students next year just to, you know, make everybody feel welcome there. Um, something else that's a highlight, good news communication. So in the old days, principals and teachers used to call parents on the phone and, and report out good news. Well, now we have email and Google, and so we're constantly sending out communication to parents. And it's amazing how many times they respond back and say, "You made my day." I'm, I'm crying as I'm typing this email. I thank you so much for acknowledging my student for anything. Anything that the teacher wants to acknowledge the student for. Um, we have 230 of those that have gone out to date, um, and that's for anything that the teachers want to celebrate with, with the student. Um, we have a whole PBIS program with Densler dollars and things that students earn and caught being good. Um, so we have that going. We have a strong growth mindset at Densler. We have an inclusive culture. So we have student mentors. They're mainly third and fourth graders that spend time in our small group special education classrooms at lunch and recess, mainly recess. But they go in, they play, they read, um, they play with them outside. They love it. Um, and then we have Embrace All mentors, and those are students that we try to hook up with new students coming into the building. In the last six days, we have three new students that are EL, no English whatsoever. Um, and just to be that, next to that person to help them within the classroom and around the building. Uh, so that's something that we have also. Great student council safety patrol. Quest tutoring is another highlight. So I was loving listening to Jill talk about the OST scores and the math scores because I'm, you know, used to teach third grade, and so we had high states tests all the time, and so I really liked the numbers. Um, but Quest tutoring is focused on tutoring that we start about this time of year and work all the way up until testing time with our students in second, third, and fourth grade in the area of math. And they, um, work on higher level, um, you know, anything that the student needs. They group the students, um, and then tutor. We have 12 teachers, many of them here who's a Quest tutor. Raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four, five. Out of the 12, five out of the 12 are here. Um, and we have 80 students that are in the Quest program now. Um, so. So it works. I throw treats and candy to the group every once in a while and they really, you know, there's other students honestly that say, can I go today? Do I get to go there? So we're always expanding that program. Fast is something I think we have at many schools, but it's really great at Densler, lots of families. We always max out at the fifteen families allowable. We have the community partner, the parent partner, a teacher partner and it's just a great program at our school. We have a fantastic PTA. We have an academic focus, we write every day. Our students wrote letters to you that you have out there. And those are from our fourth graders and I feel compelled to read one to you before I get to our outstanding staff. And this is from Peter. And Peter's in fourth grade and he came to us in kindergarten. So Peter says, dear Board of Education members, I want to tell you all about how great Densler Elementary is. So first of all, Densler is very kind and caring toward others. On my way to fifth grade, I'm going to miss all the great teachers, the things they've taught us, the school memories and all the friendships. When I started school at Densler, I was new in America, but everyone handled me as a brother, even though we barely knew each other. They gave me my first crayons, pencils and first of all, friendship. They helped me through all these years and here I am on my way to middle school. I am going to miss all the teachers and all staff from Densler. Sincerely, Peter. So that's from one of our students and you have letters similar to that.
Yes.
Just, just great. They wanted to share with you. Now for our outstanding staff.
These you really are, you'll go through all four and then we'll come up.
Yes, we'll go through all four. I might have to just get a wave of who you are. This is the most difficult part of this is selecting staff because there are so many. These staff are very humble, they work in a team, they're always acknowledging each other when they're being called out. So they truly, truly deserve this. So Patty Pacer is a kindergarten teacher. Something else that we do, if we do positive communication out, Mrs. James and I are sitting in the middle of COVID, you know, disaster, trying to figure out like, the parents were calling us all the time saying how wonderful the teachers were. And they were calling us and saying, this is so-and-so answered me at ten o'clock last night and they literally, I mean, crying on the phone. I don't know what to do, I don't know how to do it. And so we're like, how are we going to get these teachers to understand how appreciative the parents are? So we started this thing called Super Soaring Staff Member and they can fill out a Google form. And so now they acknowledge and the teacher gets, winning teacher gets a gift card every month. So here's some quotes from parents about Mrs. Pacer. As you can see, very thoughtful newsletter and always responsive, the love, the caring and affection she has for the kids. She is a second mom to my children. Mrs. Pacer reached out to me in regard to a family matter and assured me Wally was fine and she'd monitor him. She cares very deeply about our students, always sends updates and is very understanding. A couple of staff that I have, I have one on here and then another one I'm going to read. Eleven years ago, when I arrived at Densler, Patty Pacer welcomed me into her inclusion classroom with open arms. Patty exemplifies a perfect kindergarten teacher. She truly cares about every child and spends countless hours working around the clock to assure her children, both here and at home, we're receiving everything that they need academically, emotionally and socially. We have experienced it all, we have cried together, we laughed constantly, we joked that we were meant to be together. I'm so blessed that our paths have crossed and that she continues to welcome me into her classroom year after year. Another staff said, a devoted mom, wife, daughter, grade mate and last but definitely not least, an educator. Patty commits copious amounts of time each day, day in and day out to her classroom and students, making sure to give everyone who comes through her door the resources and ability to be taught and enriched. From year to year, Patty rolls with the changes, challenges and demands of being a teacher. All the while, she greets each day with a warm smile, nurturing heart, helping hands and a spirit to strive to make difference in her students and their families. I'm blessed to get to work hand in hand with such a stellar educator. A little bit about Patty, she's been teaching for twenty-eight years in the district for twenty-five and all at Densler. She was an intervention specialist and kindergarten for twenty-five years. She piloted the all-day kindergarten in two thousand and one. She serves on several district committees, she's a district kindergarten liaison, science and social studies liaison, many committees at the building. And so far, if the count is right, but it's probably more, she's taught seven-hundred-and-fifty-five kindergarten students. So that's Patty Pacer. Just. I could say more, I know. Our next one is Laura Stover, she's our building literacy specialist. And it's some comments on Mrs. Stover. Mrs. Stover makes reading fun, is very supportive, which helps make Sophia growth and strength in reading development. She is such a wonderful teacher and I'm so happy, my daughter is truly loving her time with Mrs. Stover. She is reading more confident each day. We are so thankful for her. She has even sent Sophia a personal letter in the mail and included a letter for her big brother who also had the pleasure of having Mrs. Stover. She is a jewel to Densler, the school is lucky to have her. And this came from the third grade team. She is phenomenal, she's a true professional, she's so kind and patient with her students yet she always has a clear path to help each of them succeed. Her teaching style is structured yet interactive and guided by the needs of the students. Laura is always seeking to grow in her knowledge, taking any professional development opportunities that come her way. She's a wealth of knowledge and is always willing to share resources and educate her colleagues. Laura is data-driven, uses that data to assist the team in grouping students to best meet their needs. She attends meetings to discuss individual students as well. Laura always, is always stepping in and stepping up for the best needs of the children. The third grade team is so thankful for her. She's been in Parma for twenty-six years, seventeen as a classroom teacher, nine years as a building literacy specialist. She's been at John Mir, Parma Park, John Glen, Brenwood and Densler. She is a certified academic language therapist and letters train and on many committees as well, she's a Quest tutor. So she works with our third grade students who did not meet TGRG state requirement and she really does get in at a TBT and she works the data. I'm always saying, Laura, you know, let's look at this, let's look at that. And, and I'm sending her spreadsheets and we work hand in hand. She really is an asset to all the teachers at every level there. Classified staff, Mrs. Kelly Coloney. Raise your hand, Kelly, she's in the back here. So before I read all of Kelly, when I said to Kelly, you're going to be acknowledged at a board meeting, well, I won't tell you everything she said. She said, isn't there somebody else around here that does more than I do? And I'm like, you are it. I, you know, and other people are like, she's going to kill you. But she is so deserving. You can see some comments here, Mrs. Coloney is dedicated to the students and staff at Densler, she's organized, smart, has a common sense and has a great sense of humor. She often subs as a classroom assistant, special ed assistant or in the front office. She knows all of the students and families and is consistent and diligent about all safety protocols as the general monitor. She takes that job very seriously. She knows our daily schedule, who can come in and who cannot. She checks IDs, I feel very comfortable with her at that, at that front door. Kelly goes way above and beyond without even being asked. She problem solves new monitor shortages on a daily basis. In addition to her position as general monitor, she will assist wherever needed in the office, the classroom, the hallways, any task she is given, she completes quickly and accurately. She keeps the staff laughing and has a great rapport with students and staff. Densler would not be the same without her. And Kelly is a pleasure to work with, she is always willing to help where needed, she is very informative and has a great relationship with staff members and students. She makes Densler a great place to work. She started at Densler in two thousand and thirteen as a new monitor. She is our hall monitor, she has students, our children in the district, she has a son in, at Normandy and girls that have long graduated and she has grandchildren in the district also. So that's Kelly. And then we have Sandy Groton. Sandy Groton is a special education assistant. Sandy is truly a very important part of our fourth grade team. She honestly cares about the students and always builds a great rapport with each of them. She is always willing to work with all the students as well as carry out classroom procedures. Sandy is always flexible, reliable conscientious and works with a smile, we just love her. Sandy, a good friend, loyal team member, compassionates liaison to our students. These are the qualities that stand out when working with Sandy Groton. Sandy communicates well with our most needy students, they look to her for guidance and comfort. Being a mom and a grandmother herself, she is in tune with the students' emotional needs and helps them connect with her studies by accommodating their specific learning styles. Our fourth grade team depends on Sandy to deliver repeated practice with our students in the areas of math and reading basic skills. Our students are ahead of the game in school due to Sandy working with them on a daily basis. And when I say team approach, this is our fourth grade team, raise your hands, these are app closers and they do work so well together. They support each other. We have a weekly TBT, they meet every day. I know I can always find them together in a room during planning time if I need to talk with them. So she just works so well with them. Sandy, like I said, she has two children and grandchildren. She started working in Parma in two thousand and fourteen at Ridge Brook Elementary in the cafeteria. And then in two thousand and fifteen, she became a one-on-one for a student and then came over to Densler as a special ed assistant and has worked there ever since. She said she feels blessed to work with such a caring and supporting staff, not only to our students but also each other. I truly love my job and although it can be very challenging, some days it's worth it and it is challenging. You can't rattle Sandy. If a student does something or says something, she's even killed. So those are our staff. The very last slide is just our ego pride motto that we say after the pledge every single day.
Ladies, want to come up? You're going to be in the picture. This is the official one.
All right, everyone, we're going to have good smiles. Ready, two, ready, one, two, three. And then one more, good smiles, one, two, three.
Congratulations. Congratulations. We're now just going to take some questions here. Questions or comments for Mrs. Zernick? Oh yeah, of course. All right, well, thanks, best for last for sure. I do want to say a couple of things, I have a couple of questions, but first and foremost, you know, the fabric of your school is right here and your staff, I'm sure you would have picked everybody if you could have picked everybody. But, you know, thank you for being at Fabric because that really makes Densler a place to be. And judging from the letters I read, which, you know, a couple made me tear up a little bit, that's not hard to do, but I did it. So, so anyway, thanks for that, thank you for the letters. Questions, this is the hard part, right? I thought the, your progress in gap closing, outstanding. Now, you know, I don't know if anyone can do any better than that, so it'll pass. So the question was, and I already asked you a little bit about it, was your achievement concern about your literacy thing? What I wanted to know is how many students do you have in the building that this hundred-and-eighty-five students started off off task? But what, how many approximately is that?
So we have about four-hundred-and-fifty-five students.
Four-fifty-five.
Right. And then the early literacy goes, it's the, the score from fall to fall for each grade level.
Very good. So actually that's not, that's pretty good. We want to get that, we want to get that gap closed. And I know we have plans in place and everybody does, so that's, that's awesome. And I have another question, I'll come through here in a second. I need to try to keep it, it's a memory. It's actually another question, it's more of a comment. About your highlights at Densler. I like the family atmosphere or the model that you use. I mean, that's, you know, I think that goes along with all our buildings in our district. I've seen, it seems to be a trend. And, you know, for my coaching career, not to make this about me, but that was something we always tried to do, to make it a family thing. So that I appreciate wholeheartedly because I see it and I appreciate it. All right, so thank you and congratulations to all you guys who came to the pit for this high fancy award that you got, piece of paper you're going to go put on your fridge. All right, okay? Anybody else would like to go next?
I'll go.
He's superb already.
Clearly, Densler is an outstanding place for children and for staff. It is a, a family place and that tells in everything, the way you talk about it, Mrs. Zernick, and just all of the information that you've shared here tonight. And before I forget, we love this, love these, these are just awesome, how nice. Thank you for, for bringing those, thank your students for writing them because they are appreciated for sure. Lots of stars over at Densler and hooray for all of the hard work that goes into that. It's not easy to achieve a lot of those and how great that your, that your concern is three stars. You know, I mean, that's, that's pretty awesome that the concern area is, is three stars. That's pretty great. But wow, you are, you're just doing wonderful in all sorts of areas and kids are obviously doing well at Densler, so hooray for that. And it, it appears to me that every single one of these subgroups, you are exceeding, not by a little bit, but by a lot in what's expected in terms of achievement. Hooray for you folks, that's awesome. And, and boy, thank you for providing this because it kept me from writing pages of notes and it was easier to go through all of this, I really appreciate it. One of the things that I caught that I thought was a little bit different, that I really liked, the idea of your students that are receiving the Tier Two services in the PBIS program, asking them to identify an adult that they have a comfort level with and would like to work with. That's genius, I think. I, I honestly think that's such a helpful thing for, for kids, especially that need a little extra encouragement, that need a little extra support to be able to, in essence, choose somebody that they already have a relationship with and they feel good about. So I, oh gosh, I was real impressed with that, so hooray. Gosh, lots of successes here, golly, could go on all day, I guess. I like all the kids that are mentors too, that are working with other kids. I think that, that's not only a lot of good support and help for the kids that are being mentored, but what a growth experience for the students that are actually mentoring. That's, that's wonderful. Love the constant communication with parents and looking hard to acknowledge positive things in kids all the time and then sharing that, you know, often it doesn't get shared often enough. And as a parent of kids that went through school, those moments are so meaningful and really, that's a great thing to do. Congratulations, all of the recognized staff members. Hooray and thank you for the work that you do with kids every day. Clearly you are a caring staff and it shows. I love the quotes from parents and colleagues about the work that you do. That's really meaningful. Not that what you say isn't meaningful, but it's, it's really representative too when you hear it from the parents that have kids in the class because that means the kids are coming home and saying really important things about how their day was and sharing. So that's, that's terrific. I really enjoy seeing that as well. And, you know, you know, I'll say thank you, we have high expectations across the district for our staff and you not only meet those expectations, you exceed those expectations. And that's gratitude from me to you for all that you do and all the caring that you are clearly showing to children every day. Okay, that's enough.
your job, but having your peers and all that tell you that, no, you're not just doing your job, you're either really good at your job, or you're going above and beyond, that's kind of cool to be recognized by that. So congratulations for that. Sandy, can I see our notes? I don't remember. How are your notes?
Ditto.
Yeah, ditto.
She couldn't find all her notes.
And this goes for not just you, but for all the principals that gave the things. I really like that, especially today, you know, it's really easy when something isn't going well, to, everyone likes to pass the blame and say, it's not my fault, I'm doing everything I can. It was really nice to see that everybody's saying, you know, finding an area and saying that this is not acceptable to us, and we're going, and we have a plan to fix it. So that was really, exactly, you know, we are here for education, and that's our main thing. And you see that, and it's really, really cool that everybody seemed to have, be able to look at themselves and say, there's something that I'm not doing well enough, and this is how we're going to fix it, and we're on track to fix it. So really appreciate that from you and from all the principals at all the schools. It really means a lot, so, other than now.
That exceeds your ditto.
I know, and it's my longest one. It's the last one, so I figured it'd take long for at least 35, 40 seconds.
Thank you for leading in the way that you're leading. I'll make mine shorter speeds. And thanks to you guys. I mean, honestly, as a parent of a first grader, yeah, it's nice to have feedback, and it's nice to have, like, teachers and staff that are so involved. Like, that's, that makes a huge difference.
Renee, what a great job you do. I don't know who thought of these letters, but that is the most impressive thing I've had since I've sat here in this seat. This has really, really hit my heart. And as you know, I have a big connection with your school, and so I know a lot more about Densler than I know a lot about other schools, but I can tell you from firsthand experience how dedicated the staff is at Densler, and how hard they work, and the results prove it. I mean, you can see it, and I'm just so proud to be a part of it, and I'm proud that you're in our district. Thanks again, Renee, for everything.
Thank you, thank you.
Just one question. Do we get to keep these?
Oh, of course you get to keep these. Oh, yeah. Oh, you're not getting mine back. No way. So, so that originated?
I think some of those got lost.
Yeah. So that originated was, we did a presentation at the building, kind of the road show, so senior leadership team and others came to the building, and we did a presentation. We acknowledged students and staff there, and so our students wrote letters then. So we had a little treat bag or something, and letters as we presented at the school. And this time around, I thought we were going to do the letters again, and take them, and of course, fourth grade, they write every day, so just putting that into, you know, something that they do. And I know that when the teacher gave them to me, she said they were real excited about them, and writing them, and that's why I read through all of them and had to pull Peter's out and read his, because he was, did he have you in kindergarten?
I didn't.
Okay, but he came in kindergarten, no English, and like I said, in the last six days, we have three students that know English, and they're just learning so much, and we're working so hard with them. That's a subgroup that we're going to continue to work with that concerns me, that will keep on, because you all know in the district and in every building, the influx is there. So we're working on ways to continue to help them, but yeah, the letters are just something we did the last time.
I had one more data point, too, and I'm getting a little ahead of the business lady, but we have projected, right now, Mrs. Renee and staff are about 465 students. We've projected 470 for next year. There's some things going on, you know, some units, and someone wearing those things. We have 101 students in line to get into Densler. And so we did go ahead and ask Dr. Snyder today to begin pricing a second floor. He's like, fuck, fuck, fuck. So I'm confident that...
Is this being retarded?
We think we can just lift some trailers up, actually, and kind of flop them down.
It's a flat roof.
Yes. We have 14 acres. We have 14 acres.
101 kids, I mean, that's really significant, and certainly we want to make all of our families happy, but it just really speaks to the culture that you build, the reputation you have, and tonight we saw live, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And now, Densler friends, it is a socially appropriate time for you to leave. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good to hear.
Yeah, I'm coming for round two.
Well, most of those cultural achievements, they'll be two schools. Those will be fun.
Oh, yeah.
All right, the only item I had for the board in terms of my information of the board would be that March 6th, we are going to have GPD again come and do sort of a, sort of an input session with our community, similar to what we do with our building, our feature committee. Mrs. Schwark and others who already attended, you're welcome to attend, but it's literally going to be the same process that we went through, so I don't want you to come and be bored. But it is a great way for our community to learn a couple things. What are some of the possibilities inside the building? We thought we did a great job helping people understand what the outside of the building would look like, but we probably erred a little bit, and maybe not emphasizing as much as we could have what the interior of a 21st century school can really look like. And so that's a big piece of it. And then the other piece is simply providing input. I mean, there are opportunities to really shape what that building will look like, and we want to hear from our community, we want to reflect the standards that our community would have, and some of the desires as well. So that's March 6th, at 6 o'clock PM. There is a sign up on the, on our social media right now, our website as well. We would ask you to sign up, just to make sure that we have enough seats, but we're confident that we should be able to. So 6 o'clock, March 6th, input session for the projected high school. That's it. That's all, sir.
Thank you, thank you, sir. That was very nice. I like how the schools come in. And so let's move on to the communication. Mrs. Brock?
I would just say maybe today is the last day that folks can get tickets to the annual Perogi Dinner, which is March 3rd at Normandy High School. And I think that's about it.
Where do they get them?
Yeah, get them right here. At Central Office. Do you still have tickets here?
Yeah, we actually collected them. I'm sure we can get a few in. He needs to come tomorrow, so.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Early morning tomorrow for Central Office.
Do you do it online?
We did not do any online.
Okay, I just want to make sure people wanted it.
And they are, they only have very limited amounts available at the door, so people really need to make that commitment ahead of time, so. But anyway, looking forward to a great community event with that again.
Okay, so it's still communication. I'm going to go ahead and talk about today's only event that I did. I went to Ridgebrook, I was a secret reader for Mrs. Porzinski's class, and in that class was a substitute named Yvonne Diaz, who was, I've known since I've worked at Normandy. Anyway, so I wanted a little shout out to the kids. Of course, I'm seriously great questions about me personally, which is kind of interesting, they've never met a president before, so they're really excited. I assured them it was not that big a deal, but they had some great questions and gave great hugs. I forgot that second grade was huggers, because I was like, my personal space, you know, but no, it was wonderful. So Maya, Eric, Timothy, Clayton, Amir, Riley, and Violet, I truly enjoyed my time with you guys today. Thank you for being kind and listening to the story about a wolf, which is a twist on the Three Little Pigs story, which is kind of cool, not one I had seen before. Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer, for the invitation. That's one of my favorite activities to do, is to go meet the kids. So those invitations can come flowing in on my email at any time now from you elementary school controls that are listening to the meeting. All right, so also, I wanted to mention the reflections thing, the artwork that the students did yesterday, for the calendar and for the other things that are all presented awards last night. Mrs. Wolf, Lauren Porzenko, and Darlene Gonzalez all presented awards to the kids last night in a little theater. I said it was wonderful. Kids are cute buttons. I really enjoyed that. That's another one of my favorite, there's a lot of my favorite things with kids. Obviously, you can tell that's why we're here, right? So one of my favorites. Thank you, I enjoyed it, and Noel was cute. All right.
Can I mention one more thing I completely forgot to mention?
You absolutely may.
Thank you. Last week, we had the Parma Area Chamber of Commerce here in the district doing their monthly meeting, and every February they have state of the schools. And Dr. Smilak gave lots of information about our schools and our upcoming bond issue, and did an outstanding job. Many very positive remarks, Dr. Smilak, about your presentation. The lunch was prepared and served by Norman D. Sword and Shield Career Tech Program, the Culinary Arts. And that was outstanding, the kids were great, and we had a choral performance by Valley Forge Girls Choir that was most enjoyable as well. So we had a real nice attendance in the Red Reefs Room, and it was a great community-school partnership event for all, you know, spreading the word and sharing good news about the school district. So I apologize that I forgot to mention that. Yeah.
All right, so thanks Chef Gibbons for bringing our food over. That's not a loss.
Yeah, nice job.
All right, I think we're good. All right, that goes to your treasurer. Do you have someone?
You can have, you want to have...
Okay.
PT A first?
Ms. Wolf, I want to go ahead and do our PT A council report. Is there going to be lengthy, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, might be.
All right, greetings from Parma Council of PTAs. Parma Council enjoyed a fun afternoon at the Monsters hockey game on February 11th with some of our Parma City Schools families. We're very excited that we were able to raise over $1,000 from the 50/50 raffle for our scholarship program. We want to thank all the volunteers and families that attended. We are currently accepting nominations for our annual special education advocate. These are due March 1st. The forms are available on the district webpage. Soon we'll be announcing the winners of this award, as well as the helping hands and outstanding educators. This year, we had over 50 students participate in the reflections program. Yesterday evening, we enjoyed an art recognition night that honored both the reflections participants and the calendar artists. Congratulations to all those who participated. The registration deadline is this Friday, tomorrow, for the upcoming babysitter course. Information was sent to our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. The course will be held at Parma Senior High on Saturday, March 4th and the 11th. We're excited that the Parma Heights fire departments will be out to CPR certify all of the kids. Our annual founder celebration is fast approaching. We'll be holding this event at Parma High in the cafeteria. The event is on March 30th. Invitations were sent out, and we are still looking for influential people in the district to send us pictures of you holding a star for our founders program that we're putting together. So I'll be checking my email for those when I get home. Can I just say the nation with this? Yes, with a star. I was asked, I shouldn't have passed her out. I was asked to also share some information about our community scholarship program. This year, it is celebrating the 20th anniversary. In 2002-2003 school year, the community scholarship was added as a way for anyone to share in contributing to a fund for the scholarships for our graduating seniors, seniors of the Parma City School District. Each year, our theme has been Loose Change for Scholarships. I'm sure that you've seen Cindy Brock's around with her containers, collecting coins. A lot of our small donations add up to very big scholarship dollars. This year, since it's the 20th anniversary, we have a special challenge. We are trying to raise 20 cents for each resident of the three cities in the Parma City School District. That would total over $20,000. We are also offering a special $20 donor club. Recognition will be given in our scholarship program, which is seen by hundreds this spring, for anyone who contributes $20 or more. How you can help sponsor your family, a dollar or less, only a dollar or less for most, circulating a container at any of your organizational meetings. And if you would like any other information, please see our chair, Cindy Brock. Our next council meeting is Wednesday, March 8th at 7:00 PM in the Parma Senior High cafeteria. All are welcome, and we hope to see you there. Thank you. Shana?
Thank you. Thanks for liking yesterday.
Wait, I have a question. I got a question. With the star thing?
Yes. So we're putting together a slideshow of the founders event is where, tiny star. Yeah, that's where all of our presidents, presidents, winners come together. So we're showing them, that's perfect. You can make it a little more colorful. But we're showing that what PT A does, what the mission is. So we're trying to put together a slideshow of...
And then when do you want to buy?
The 24th, which is tomorrow. But I will take any last minute entries, the event is not until the end of March. Okay? Thank you.
When's the next time we're all together that we could take one?
We have plenty of talented people in the room right now, and someone, Mrs. Doctor Stranko, could find us a star maybe, and we could take pictures.
Yeah.
That'd be amazing. We do that.
Yeah, I think...
Sometime between now and the end of the meeting, because then we'll just...
Yeah, you have 20 minutes.
Are you joking?
No. There's got to be somewhere in Central Office, we got to have a star. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you got to follow that, Mr....
Okay, so Hospital One.
Hospital One.
I know Dr. Smilak listened to something today, the word wasn't helpful, but they did talk about Hospital One in the first ring today. I know it's only a proposal, so I don't expect we're going to get it passed, but in the original form. What their plan is right now, I always say, one mill cost taxpayer $35. The new bill, they want to change it to $31.5. So that's a 10% decrease in property taxes we need to receive. And if you look at the governments...
Could you repeat that?
It's a 10% decrease in property taxes we need to receive.
Which equates to how much money?
I'll get to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Well, I want to make sure everybody hears that. That's a big deal.
You will say that.
So you could say they're just trying to punish schools, but it punishes anybody who receives, any government that receives property taxes. So if you live in Parma or Southern Hills or Parma Heights, your taxes go to the county, the port authority, the school district, the library, Tri-C, and the metro parks. Those are all governments that receive money from your taxes. So they all lose money in this, so I don't see how this is going to go through in this original format, but we receive $40 million in emergency levy funds, and those are dollar amounts, like one mercy levy is $15.6 million. So that's every time you get to save them out. So in order to reach that, I believe they would have to raise everybody's taxes in order for us to get to that $15.6 million, if they lower their collection percentage to 31.5%. So that would, the remaining, what we lose from there is, would be $5.8 million every year. $5.8 million every year. But also, they want to get rid of homestead rollback, which homestead rollback is, if you're supposed to pay $1,000 in property taxes, the state says, if you live in your home and you own a home, we'll give you a 12.5% discount, so you really only pay $875. And the remaining $125 is paid by the state to us. And for us, that equates to $14.6 million a year. So if you total those two together, you'd lose over $20 million a year. This goes through the original, original, but I don't see how...
That's if it passes.
Yeah, I just don't see how that's going to pass.
And when they asked the sponsor of the bill, so how do you expect local entities to make this up? His statement was, well, they can still go for levies. And levies themselves will have to be much higher, because you're collecting smaller dollars on each mill. I mean, it's dumbfounded.
I thought he was quoted as saying, let them eat cake, but I wasn't sure. Never mind.
I think the intention is, they want to get rid of the state income tax, and all they got cut this is if we're going to get rid of state income tax. So let's cut it out of the amount we have to pay... but I don't see how.
That's if it passes.
Yeah, I just don't see how that's going to pass.
And when they asked the sponsor of the bill, so how do you expect local entities to make this up for? His statement was, well, they can still go for levies. And levies themselves will have to be much higher, because you're collecting smaller dollars on each mill. I mean, it's dumbfounded.
I thought he was ordered to say, let them eat cake, but I wasn't sure.
Oh, man.
Never mind.
I think the intention is.
Good history thing.
They want to get rid of the state income tax. And all they got to cut places is if we're going to get rid of state income tax. So let's cut it out of the amount we have to pay back to entities for property taxes.
I have any other?
No, that was just it.
Oh, that's it?
I wanted to let, I wanted to know.
No, no, I appreciate your report. I'm just letting you know that it was like, I feel like I had a big balloon and you had a pin.
Well.
After, after the Tensler and everything else. That's okay. I'm just joking. It's a bummer. But we'll keep an eye on that, right?
Right.
All right. So invitation to public address to the board? Nope, no. I don't see anybody who wants to do it. Okay, so any amendments?
No.
All right. So I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-85, approval of the written record proceedings from February 9th, 2023, regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
We have motion and second to adopt resolution 2023-02-85. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
And so, resolution 2023-02-85 has been approved. This brings us to a lovely curriculum. Mrs. Brox?
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of resolution 2023-02-86, approval of overnight out-of-state, out-of-country field trips.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution 2023-02-86. Any questions or comments from the board? Can I do bio comment? This is a pretty good thing here with what's going on. Explorer, the Explorer program. So kids get to go down to, I believe they're going to Louisville, Kentucky, and they get to, you know, look at different colleges, and they can explore different cultures, and et cetera, et cetera. It's a really good, good thing. Not to be topped off with a thing, I saw a report on the Quebec trip, the French trip, which apparently was outstanding. I don't know, teaching science, I never got to go on those trips. I'm a bummer. But I'm sure that was, that was a good time.
It's teacher initiated, Mr. Vaughn, so if you want.
Yeah, there was a trip that went to Maine, but I was never privy to that either.
And this, this is also at no cost to students.
Correct.
These kids took courses last, or during the fall, and were able to get into this program. And if they participated, they, they, you know, had the opportunity.
That's great.
Outstanding opportunity for kids.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-86 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss this evening, that will conclude curriculum, Mr. Vaughn.
Then you, Ms. Brox. Business, Ms. Ruda?
As I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-87, approving pupil transportation agreement with Sunshine Transportation LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-87. Any question or comments from the board? Seeing none. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-87 has been approved.
All right, I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-88, approving pupil transportation agreement with JV Safety First Transportation LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution 2023-02-88. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing how we just did two of these in a row, or are these companies are just going to help us out? Do we have?
Yeah, I mean, we're always.
Calling.
These companies are going through the same issues we are with drivers. So the more we sort of have on-call, so to speak, it just helps us to begin a better transportation.
Very good. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-88 has been approved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
This concludes business unless somebody else, I mean, unless another board member has anything they would like to discuss, this concludes business.
Very good. Thank you. Finance, Mr. Kreis?
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt resolution 2023-02-89, approval of the January 2023 financial report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-89. Any question or comments from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-89 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-90, ratification of investments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-90. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-90 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-91, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-91. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-91 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-92, approval of then-and-now certificates over $3,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-92. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mr. Swart?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-92 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-93, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-93. Any questions or comments from the board? As per usual, thank you very much for your donations to the school. Schools are thinking of Parma City Schools as you share your generosity. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I could, um, Mrs. Brox asked me about this today, and so I talked to Emily Gladys. She leads our nutrition services, but it's sort of interesting. So if we get a monetary donation, sometimes it'll be earmarked, I'm sorry, monetary donation from lunch debt. Sometimes it'll be earmarked specifically for a school, and that's legal, and you can direct it that way. If not, you have to apply it equally to all student lunch debt. So for instance, if we got $1,000 and there are 1,000 kids who had some type of lunch debt, all of those would have $1 removed from their lunch debt. That was interesting. So they didn't specify a school. These ones did not. We have seen them before. I feel like recently, we had one specific to John Muir.
I remember he had a John Muir.
Yeah.
Couple needs a belt.
Couple needed a belt.
Yeah. So roll call, please.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-93 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Job well done. Legislation, Mr. Brox?
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I was just going to ask Mr. Nusio to talk about the potential loss of funds if that House bill prevails.
Yeah, I think it was, I said $20 million, but I just don't see proceeding in the, or even getting.
That's good news.
In the original format. It's just going to hurt every government in the state. I just don't see them doing that.
Pretty scary. Well, thank you. That was all I was going to ask for tonight. That's all. Girl set. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Unless another board member has anything to discuss regarding legislation, or if Mr. Dr. Smilak has anything that he would like to add about legislation, that's all for me this evening.
Well, I mean, we could comment on this, that it literally took a month and a half for the House to even set its rules to have any type of meeting where legislation introduced. So the amount of productivity that we can anticipate from this General Assembly may be in from what we're hearing, hopefully, very low.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, this brings us to human resources. Mr. Kreis?
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt resolution 2023-02-94, approval of the following certificated exhibits. Confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, approval of certified non-compensated leave of absence, acceptance of certificate, resignation.
Certificated resignation.
Yeah, we're obviously.
Yeah, that's hard. That's hard to get in that.
Second.
There we go. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-94. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-94 has been approved.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution 2023-02-95, acceptance of certificated retirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-95. Any question or comments from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-95 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-96, resolution to abolish the position of Director of Aces Center for Education and suspend the contract of the person holding the position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-96. Any question or comments from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-96 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-02-97, approval of the following classified exhibits. Confirmation of classified appointments replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified re- resignations.
My brain isn't ticking tonight. Okay.
Approval of classified non-compensated leave of absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-97. Any question or comments from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-97 has been approved.
Unless another, a board member has anything to discuss, this concludes human resources for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. And I'm just glad I don't have to read all that after you when you read those things. All right, this brings up policy. Mrs. Swart?
I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-02-98, annual review of policies in accordance with federal grant requirements.
Second.
We have a motion. Wow.
That was fast.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-98. Any question or comments from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Nusio?
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-98 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-02-99, approval of technical policy changes to the following policies. Policy 2250, innovative programs, policy 3270, lesson plans, policy 4130.01, reduction in force, policy 4139, staff discipline, policy 4170, substance abuse, and policy 4170.01, employee assistant program.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-99. Any question or comments from the board?
Now, these are just technical, just updating.
Updating.
Yeah, there's no change.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Nusio, please.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-02-99 has been approved. Well played, sir.
Please, I just say I'm doing the first reading.
Yes, first reading.
First reading of the following revised policies. Policy 1623, that's 1623, it's going to be section 504 in the ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. Policy 2260.01, section 504, ADA prohibition against disability based on disability. Policy 2266, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. Policy 3123, section 504, ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. Policy 4123, section 504, ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. And policy 4130, assignment and transfer.
And then these are, these are basically because Robert left, so we had to assign a new person to handle this. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Can we just make a remark about policies? You know, you read through all of these, and I encourage people, they need to, you know, a sleeping pill or something at night to read them. Some of the stuff that is driven legally for school districts is so complicated and extensive. Kudos to the administration for keeping up on all of this. It's, it's remarkable. When you read through these pages and pages and pages of responsibilities that schools have, it's, I just say kudos to you folks that are keeping track of everything, because it's, it's a lot of hard work and it's a lot of technical stuff.
Very tedious work, right?
It is, it is. And it's.
I recall it.
It's a lot of responsibility and important responsibility. So thanks for all of you that are taking care of.
Just one of those, the policy is 15 pages long.
Yeah.
Because it has to, you know, it's, you know, mere federal law. So, yeah, it's a lot to go through, 15 pages of just one policy to look at each word.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's a big deal. And then to make sure that we're in compliance with all of this sort of stuff, it's, it's a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me just.
Sure.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes policies.
Thank you. Any information requested by board members? We already took care of that earlier.
The question that we had.
Yes, yes. Opportunity to have questions written? No, no, no questions written on record tonight. We don't need to exact our session. So I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-101 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-101. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brox?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Swart?
Yes.